Good afternoon. It is April 25th. I think this is the most perfect date ever. And we are here for City Council. We are going to move immediately from Agenda Items Two and go immediately into our regular City Council meeting. And so at this time, I'm honored to have Reverend Jim Haney, St. Paul's, as he'll step forward. If you would all please stand as he prays for us today, and then we'll move immediately to the pledges by Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to share a few verses from Psalm 104. Bless the Lord, oh my soul! Oh Lord, my God, how excellent is your greatness! You are clothed with majesty and splendor. You water the mountains from your dwelling on high; the earth is fully satisfied by the fruit of your works. You make grass grow for flocks and herds, and plants to serve mankind. Oh Lord, how manifold are all your works! In wisdom you have made them all; the earth is full of your creatures. All of them look to you, to give them their food and do season. You give it to them, they gather it; you open your hand, and they are filled with good things. You send forth your spirit, and they are created; and so you renew the face of the earth. May the glory of the Lord endure forever; may the Lord rejoice in all his works. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of the blessings you give us. You also tell us to pray for those things we need. And dear Lord, we do ask at this time for such moderate rain and showers as may moisten Lubbock and surrounding South Plains, so that our farmers may get good crops and enjoy a good harvest this coming fall. And we thank you for those who are caring for the needs of others in our community and looking out for their needs, for our charitable organizations, South Plains Food Bank, all of our religious organizations, those who help those in need. We ask you to bless them in their work. We thank you for those who protect others, for our first responders, for our armed forces members. We ask your special grace and protection upon all of them. And dear Lord, you promised to send forth your spirit upon us, and we ask for a dose of your spirit, that we may serve you in righteousness and that you may have a harvest of righteousness amongst us. We pray for this City Council, for the mayor, for all the staff and workers, for our fine city. We ask you to bless them in their work as well. And we ask you to bring forth in us those fruits of your spirit that you promise: love, joy, peace, gentleness, self-control, kindness, generosity, faithfulness. And we lift up all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. If you would join us as we pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'm sorry.
According to Lubbock City Rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the City Council regarding any posted matter shall complete the sign-up form provided at the meeting no later than 2:00 P.M. Citizen comments are an opportunity for citizens to make comments, express a position on an agenda item. Recall, if you have done this before, if you'll step forward to the microphone when your name is called, please state your name and your address and the agenda item which you are speaking on. You will have three minutes to speak. At two and a half minutes, Mr. Jimmy will give you a nice little courteous bell, and then you will complete before the end of your three minutes. First, we have Rick Rodriguez.
Mayor Payne, it is a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon, and I first want to start by thanking you all for your service and for working through challenging discussions on behalf of our citizens of this great city. My name is Rick Rodriguez. I'm the Chief Operations Officer, and I'm humbled to serve in that role for the Lubbock Independent School District. I'm here representing the district in opposition of Agenda Item 7.14, which is a request for variance from applicable 300-foot minimum distance provision listed in the city's ordinance number 2009-00060. We previously have addressed this council with our concerns in November, and our position has not changed. We believe previous leadership had valid concerns when they put this ordinance in place to protect our children's safety and parents' safety. It's pretty simple. Adding the complexity of serving alcohol at a location so close to a school is a recipe for potential disaster. We provided a folder with a few documents for your consideration as you prepare to make your vote known. These documents include a letter from our superintendent, Dr. Kathy Rollo, letters from teachers and parents, an image of the entrances to the establishment, an overhead image of the locations of those entrances as it relates to our school. We anticipated having our school principal here today, but those of you that have children in school know today is star testing, and so she is busy doing the work of a principal. And so we appreciate her tending to that, as that's what our priority is for her. Also have here today Rob Nance, who represents our facilities team for the district. And finally, again, I would just say thank you for your time and consideration, most importantly, for your support in denying this request for the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Next, we have Mr. Sam Gonzalez.
How y'all doing? I'm here on behalf of Paulina Madrid. And she called me a while ago earlier, and we have discussed the issue about her restaurant and everything that's happened, you know, with COVID in the last few years. There's a lot of places that have had a downfall in revenues because of the illness, and she's trying to just pick herself back up and just try to make a living. Fortunately or unfortunately, her location of business is there at 50th and Q. There are several bars there. What she wants to do is open up a restaurant. And she wants a license to try to sell some beer and some liquor, and a lot of the menu's Mexican food and barbecue. You know, there's plenty of other watering holes in that area, but, you know, if anything, having food available for people whenever they leave the place can be very beneficial because if anything, that'll help people sober up if they're intoxicated beyond, you know, control. And if they are, it is not even going to be her problem or fault, per se, because all she's going to do is have a restaurant, and people can go there and actually sober up somewhat, if you want to say that. I don't know how people come out of these bars. I just know there's already several of them. So her intent is to get people on the other side of that mental capacity, and that's why I'm here on behalf of her. I've been a Lubbock citizen for many years, since probably mid-'80s. I am the past president of LULAC here in the city, one of the councils. We've been around in... Well, I've been around with LULAC since 1982, so I've had the pleasure and honor to know a lot of the previous people from the city that have been in certain capacities. So I think what she's told me and trying to do is, again, you know, trying to get above that level in having to ask for government assistance in any type, like a lot of people perhaps are wanting to do, and so what, and so forth. But she's just helping her family trying to come above that line. And again, you know, if anything, by having a place to eat in that area, and I'm sure y'all know where I'm talking about, correct? Am I... Okay, I was assuming you knew, but if not, if anything, she's there trying to get people above that being sober or not line of providing food for people there. And the reason I'm here is on her behalf, wanted to tell you more about her personal side. Again, you know, she has been in the restaurant business prior and other businesses, but she's just trying to get above that helping-me-out attitude sometimes I feel like a lot of people have, and just trying to make a living. And my understanding is-
Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry. We're going to move on. Your time is up.
Oh, okay.
I don't think you heard it.
No, I did not.
We'll tell Jimmy to hit that little horn. Thank you for your time.
Since I was first, I-
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paulina Madrid.
Hi. Well, everybody knows my story. We have gone as far, we understand the safety of the children is very important, but the last time I was here, someone was granted that was right next door to a daycare. There's children there as well, but I'm not here to argue. I have gone as far as to change my name. My name is now Tiff C's Taco Shop. I've completely changed the whole logo. We are just a restaurant. We're not trying to get anybody drunk that will drive and go 300 square feet and run over a child, which that was said last time. We're just trying to serve food, and many of you guys, as well as me and everybody here, has always gone out to eat at a restaurant and had a few drinks. I'm not trying to get anybody drunk, but today this will either make me or break me. I'm going to lose my restaurant. I'm not going to cry, because it's only fair that I become successful as a Latina woman in this city as anybody else. I've been told by everybody, "Why didn't you do it on the West Side?" But you know what? People in the hood and poor people we eat too. And it's unfair that I come and everybody gets a yes, but I get a no because trash flies to L.I.S.D. I provide free meals for children between four and six, under eight. I provided free vouchers for the kids at Hodges for Christmas, and I will for summer. I go on and beyond. I have kids of my own. My daughter killed herself, and this is in her honor. And whether it's a no, I'm going to come back because I can. And unfortunately, it's, I'm not asking for anything that's not there. No, I'm not CC's. No, I'm not the Pub. No, I'm not the Coombia. I don't stay open till 6:00. We don't get butt drunk. We don't play ugly music. We're just there to eat. We close at 10:00, and we leave. My daughter, she is 18 years old, and she works there as well. My granddaughter works as well. I work 16 hours a day, and I'm dying. I sell tacos for a dollar when somebody else gets $3 a taco. I don't know what it is. I don't know why you guys keep telling me no. I don't understand. But today, before I leave, I would love for you guys to sit down and tell me, "Hey, you know what? It's no because of this." I understand the safety of the children. I understand it. But I'm there almost 24 hours a day, and I promise that in the daytime, it is not a bad location. And if it is, then we need to do something about it, because then people like me, we will never be successful, and that area will never grow if it's that dangerous for the kids to even play outside. Thank you. I don't know if my time's-
Ms. Madrid, I'm sorry. I failed to ask you for your address.
It's my home-
Is it 5001 Avenue Q?
Yes, it's 5001 Avenue Q, Suite A.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Get her residence address.
Yes, I'm sorry. What's your residence address?
1704 77th Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79423.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Next, we have Richard Murphy.
Good afternoon, Council members and Mr. Mayor. I sent you an email on Sunday. I'm sure you get a lot of emails, in which I suggested that I found a serious problem with the HDR zoning in UDC. But looking again, I think it's not so much a problem as just an important clarification that needs to happen. I don't know if you can quickly pull up Table 3902003-1, one of my favorites. I hope to give you copies, but my printer let me down. The point of looking at that table would be that there's something unique about how it lays out the HDR zone, which is that if you look at the structure of the table, it suggests that only two of the old zones turned into HDR, that is to say, A3 and CA. Only two of those zones can use the mixed-use subdivision, if you look at the structure. It's the only new zone that's structured like this. This turns out to be super important because it's the mixed-use subdivision that supercharges HDR and allows the building of, say, for instance, 75-foot-tall buildings with no maximum lock coverage percentage. That's what supercharges the HDR. And the problem is that if you take the other zones that have turned into HDR, A2, R3, AM, and you allow them to use that subdivision, well, then you wind up with 75-foot-tall buildings or authorization for them in places that are, well, really indefensible. I mean, one place you wind up with it is you just went through a lot of effort to reject on 19th Street a 60-foot building because it's too big. This would authorize a 75-foot building. And it's not just 19th Street, whatever you think of that. Being a Tech Terrace bore for just another moment, there are isolated lots within Tech Terrace at 23rd and University and 27th and Boston that are zoned HDR. And if you can take R3, A2, et cetera, and build a 75... Well, you see, that's simply crazy. And it's not just a Tech Terrace problem. I should think that all council members, if they were to look at their district maps and look at the new UDC map, anything that's dark green, well, that's HDR, right? And you could probably find a spot in your district where you think, "Well, I'm not so sure a 75-foot building should be authorized for that spot." The problem is that structure in that table that suggests that only CA and A3 can use the subdivision, you can't find that in the HDR district description itself. So I suggest what needs to happen here to prevent a lot of unintended consequences is for the council to clarify that this table structure, the UDC's own table, that it has legal effect, right? And that it is only the CA and A3 that get to use the supercharge form of HDR. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Again, tell me your address.
Forgive me. 2911 20th Street.
Thank you. Just make a reminder so I don't forget. If you step up, if you'll give us your address and make it your home address. All right, next, we have Ms. Jane Henry.
Good afternoon. I'm Jane Henry. I live at 5236... That's not right. 5322 20th Street, 79407. Confused. I tried to find some of my young friends to come today to speak to you all, because I know you're tired of hearing from us again, so please use your imagination. They all have to be either out of town or at work. 2:00 is a very hard time for them just to leave their offices. So pretend that I'm young and blonde and not the same old lady you're old that you've heard from a million times. Also give our other friends the same grace. I spoke to several people, and they all said, "Please deliver the message that we want you to save our city from billboards. Save it for our children." Jim Bertram was the city planner back around the time of the tornado, and Allen Henry was the mayor for several years. Both of them dealt with city councils repeatedly, and both of their eras left a legacy. When you think of Jim Bertram, you think of the fact that he saved the Yellow House Canyon from being turned into the city dump, and the Canyon Lake system bears his name. And everyone across the state knows about Lake Allen Henry, which is part of our water project. So these councils left an indelible legacy, and I hope that as you all are making your decisions, you will consider your legacy and don't become the Benedict Arnold of Lubbock City Councils by turning us over to the billboard companies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Good afternoon, members of council and Mr. Mayor. I'm Joe McKay. I live at 5115 Second Street, Number 12, 79416. I'm past chairman of the ZBA, and I'm also a member of the Comprehensive Planning Committee that met a couple of years prior to the whole process of the UDC beginning. I urge that you enact the Uniform Development Code as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There have been numerous public meetings and hearings to receive input from the various groups within the city. The document for you today has been thoroughly vetted and reviewed and represents the best interest of all the citizens of Lubbock and not any special interest group. Rumors of the opening up the major corridors and freeways to billboard industry will bring an influx of companies to Lubbock, seeking locations to place their oversized billboards as they are compared to the business person and the development centers have a different size of building notification or signage. The citizens of Lubbock paid taxes for the streets and bond issues to help build the thoroughfares that we have in the corridors, and I don't think that the billboard industry has invested very much money in those developments, yet they use those corridors as a way to provide their message to the public. Please uphold the UDC as it was recommended to you by the PNC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Alastair Hamilton. I live at 2902 20th Street. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have a very simple concern that I want to express, just to elaborate on a concern that was expressed by my friend and colleague, Professor Murphy, and that is the number of single-family homes that get rezoned into HDR under the new Unified Development Code zoning map. As Professor Murphy explained, there appears to be some ambiguity as to whether the HDR designation would allow people to erect seven-foot-tall, seven-story-tall apartment complexes on these areas. A number of single-family homes get rezoned under HDR under this, and you can look on the map in a number of places. For instance, just to give some examples, some homes on 10th Street northwest of the Loop, just one-story homes, about 6,000-square-foot lots. Some houses on 32nd Street, just East of University, about 10,000-square-foot lots, just simple one-story buildings. And also the one that Professor Murphy mentioned on 27th Street, just opposite the Jan B.'s Coffee Shop, just down the road from the school. A lot of these locations seem to be places that would be very inappropriate to build a seven-story apartment complex. And furthermore, because of the way that the zoning laws work, it seems that it would invite also people to buy up neighboring lots around it and then apply to change those designations to high-density residential and then apply there to build more apartment complexes. And so there is some prospect that these HDR designations from these single-family homes could seed rather large apartment complexes if this sort of ambiguity with the UDC isn't clarified by the council. All right. Thank you very much for listening to my consent.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Adam Hernandez. I live at 7401 Avenue X at 79423 here in Lubbock. I also serve as the Communications Chair on the Board of Lubbock Compact. I am making the first part of our official comment, and my colleague Josh will make the second part. Three minutes doesn't leave you a lot of time. So first of all, we were excited to hear that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the creation of a committee to look at amortization. This is very encouraging. I just wanted to give a little more context to some questions that have been asked of us along the way, and we were not able to answer just yet. I've sent you all a link to a Google Doc that has some of these things that I'm referencing here. And so when we talk about the legality of amortization and is there even precedent for it here in Lubbock? There is. Several signs were amortized after the 1975 signed ordinance was passed. It's been discussed extensively here. The signed ordinance itself survived several court challenges, and you can reference Lubbock Poster Company versus City of Lubbock for that. Both the Supreme Court of Texas and the Supreme Court of the United States denied the appeal of Lubbock Poster on that, and so there is a lot of legal precedent there. Another one just in Texas, and there's many more examples, but just to even look outside of Lubbock in Texas, there's also precedent for this. Dallas used amortization for a mining and landscaping supply business, which the Texas Court of Appeals also appealed, that's there in Dallas. The court based its ruling on the Texas Supreme Court's decision that, quote, "A municipality's power to terminate existing property uses rendered nonconforming under zoning regulations is a valid exercise of the police power," end quote. And so that speaks a lot to the legality of this and precedent, and so there's some of that. That case was the Board of Adjustment of City of Dallas versus Winkles, who was then citing City of University Park versus Benders. And so you can look at those in that doc as well. Another thing we've heard about is property rights and people being concerned with violating folks' property rights. Our argument for this is that the city would not be taking anybody's property, so we're not violating anybody's property rights. Essentially, what's going on here is the same thing, how we have code enforcement that enforces junk cars, overgrown weeds, rubbish, and things of this nature. You're not taking that person's property. You're simply saying you can't have something that's a nuisance or harmful there in the neighborhood next to residents. And this would be, though, a more complicated version of that, is something very similar. I was also asked of what would a good base ordinance be, the one from Dallas, seeing as it has been tested and survived court cases, is a really good one. That's Dallas Code of Ordinances, Section 51A-4.704. The only other thing that I have is that after consideration and speaking to several other people and then taking a look internally myself, we would like to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to leave the current signed ordinance as is. I grew up where those signs are currently allowed, and I took a look at that area versus the other areas of the city, and I don't want that for the other areas of the city. And so I think we need to slow it down and just leave it as is. We've heard all the arguments for that case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Stephen Fulk. I'm a practicing architect of over 30 years here in Lubbock. I reside at 2827 23rd Street in Tech Terrace, and I'm about to build a house at 2808 once y'all resolve this UDC. Since I only have three minutes or less, I can only talk from about 35,000 feet, but I encourage you to look at the UDC and how it, in fact, impacts the nature and the character of all the various neighborhoods in Lubbock, Texas. You've heard someone already speak about going to a 75-foot-high building allowed by code that was where it was turned down at 60 or so feet. I know that the UDC allows, or there is proposal to allow, carports to be in front yards. I know that the UDC allows or there is proposal to allow carports to be in front yards, which would dramatically change the character of a lot of the many established neighborhoods, including yours, should that be allowed. It seems to me that the UDC code needs to step back and take things on a, sometimes a case-by-case basis, don't just streamline it and let it occur as a matter of right, whether we're talking about carports in front yards or 75-foot-high buildings and the density of those buildings. If you think about the character of Lubbock, Texas, essentially a one-to-two-story urban fabric, and every now and then something sticks up, whether it's a church steeple or a tower, for instance, is on Avenue Q. I think you need to look at the character of the neighborhood and mitigate between what someone's proposing in height and density and how that would impact that neighborhood. I would encourage you to follow the PNC recommendations about billboards. I'm on the billboard I don't like a case, and keep it the way it is and not augment it, as I have heard some of the billboard industry would like to think about. I almost fell over when I was told, and Mary Kreitz wouldn't let me speak for the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I was already ramped up on billboards. I'm told they could be 45 feet tall along our major thoroughfares, 65 feet at an overpass, 1,000 feet apart. Geez, that's a lot of distance, until you look at it in perspective and that we're going to create canyons 45 feet high to 65 feet high along our major thoroughfares. If that includes all of our major streets of Avenue Q, University, 19th, all those streets, it is going to dramatically change the character of Lubbock, Texas. One of the really nice things about Lubbock is that our rooftops touch the sky. It is not interrupted by billboards or other really excessively tall structures. Let the sky still touch Lubbock. That's going to have a major impact on convincing people to come back to Lubbock or come to Lubbock, live, establish our businesses, and improve our economy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephen. Mary Kreitz?
Hi, my name's Mary Kreitz, 4617 8th Street. I have three comments to make. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to comment on the draft UDC as it relates to billboards. I'm simply asking you to uphold the recommendation of your Planning and Zoning Commission and leave billboards to be allowed only in the L1 and G1 zoning districts by specific use. Numerous prior councils and planning and zoning commissions have preserved and protected the billboard and sign ordinance for over 40 years so that we could have attractive thoroughfare corridors in Lubbock. I'm asking you today to protect the sign and billboard standards as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission so that the next generation can continue to enjoy our clutter-free streets and thoroughfares in the future. Secondly, I would ask that you make no changes to where carports in front yards are allowed. I think it's important in terms of going through a variance process if they're going to be in somebody's front yard. And then lastly, I'm going to put on my Urban Design Historic Preservation Commission Chair Hat, if you will, and ask that before any amendments are allowed, changing requirements, the historic overlay requirements, that that be sent back to the historic, that be sent back to the Urban Design Historic Preservation Commission for their input as it was gained, our input was gained a year or so ago during the UDC process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitz. Jim Bertram?
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Jim Bertram, and I reside at 57 South Lakeshore Drive, Ransom Canyon, Texas. And I'm here to speak on behalf of a number of Lubbock citizens that have retained me to speak for them and for the Lubbock Heritage Society. I am the citizens that I represent, are asking you to uphold the recommendations of your Planning and Zoning Commission and pass the UDC with the corrected billboard section. With regard to the various alternatives that have been circulated, and I know you've seen some of them, by different billboard companies, they have two things in common. They want to open up our corridors, our expressway corridors, to billboards and allow billboards in all commercial and industrial park zones. With regard to the billboard corridors, billboard regulations that you pass should not be based on what could happen tomorrow, but what is allowed far into the future, because that is what will define the image of our city. It is a fact that it would open up over 100 frontage miles of Lubbock expressways to new billboards, most of the alternatives that I've seen. If you allow billboards in all commercial, office, and industrial park districts, as has been recommended by some, it is a fact that it would open up 10 previous zoning districts that never permitted billboards in the past. Five billboard companies will be competing for locations, and there will be a proliferation of new billboards if those alternatives are passed. In fact, I know I have in my possession proof that at least one billboard company is already negotiating for a lease or purchase of land to put a billboard on the Marsha Sharp Freeway, which seems odd because you haven't even approved a corridor plan or much less that Marsha Sharp will be in it. 672 square-foot billboards could be placed in light commercial districts where the maximum business signs are only 250 square feet, and that's if they have 600 feet of frontage, whereas a billboard only needs four feet of land to build a billboard. This drawing shows the scale, the shaded-in area shows the relative scale of the maximum-sized billboard, where the light area imposed on that is the maximum size for a billboard. That is the, most of our signs now are monument signs between 50 and 100 feet. So that shows how it would be totally out of scale. So any amendments to allow billboards in commercial or industrial park districts should be by specific use only, requiring zone case hearings. To structure it otherwise would be to deny all Lubbock citizens, including the Planning Commission and the City Council, a voice in the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bertram. Cody Keller?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Sorry to keep the theme going here on billboards, but I'm here to speak against Item 7.16 and the adoption of the UDC, as I feel that the billboard regulations are outdated and antiquated. I'm sure everyone has seen a number of proposals that have come before you guys. Subsequently, I know the city staff has put something together and even showed maps on where these billboard locations could go if a corridor plan was adopted, which ultimately led to a total of two new billboards in the city limits. I gave Kristin Sager another latest version of alternative billboard regulations that I'm sure she handed to you guys and I have copies here if y'all need them. But it's kind of a middle ground between the city staff's proposal and my previous proposal, which still includes extended spacing. I did it with the, on the same side of the roadway to mirror text stop regulations and an increased spacing from residential properties on the same side of the street. These regulations are reasonable and should be acceptable to both sides and also allow for local businesses to advertise in the growing areas of Lubbock that they desire to. Whatever regulations are adopted into the UDC, whether that be today or at a later date, they should be well thought out, scrutinized, and considered carefully. And as such, with a lot of consideration, I think that those regulations should be adopted on a by-right basis, not a specific use basis, so that every individual billboard case does not have to go to PNC and council to get approval. And if you guys need these, I'll pass them along over here, and I'm here for any questions if y'all need that when we get to it.
Kristin did circulate that to us.
Okay, thank you.
Could you give me your address, please?
Oh, sure. 159 Adler, Bernie, Texas.
All right, Pastor Anderson?
Josh Shankles, I live in the 2600 block of 47th Street, and I'm here to speak in favor of Item 7.16. I'm so glad Ms. Henry brought up the notion of legacies, because that is exactly the context with which I was speaking about the matter of amortization before you when last we were together. As was mentioned, I want to address the other half of our organization's position on that, and that organization is, of course, Lubbock Compact. You know, we know that what has come before you is a proposal out of the Planning and Zoning Committee to have a special commission put together to look at the issue of amortization and investigate the feasibility of this. We would hasten to thank Member Tomlinson and Chairman Sawyer of the Planning and Zoning Commission and all the members who took this issue up with such seriousness and put forward this recommendation to you. Though we might disagree that there isn't adequate time to put an amortization ordinance into the current Unified Development Code, especially because we began bringing this up more than a year ago, this idea of putting together a special commission to investigate it is something we'd wholeheartedly support. We think most people would. It would allow us to look at the issue very thoroughly, and not only the issue in and of itself, but all the things that would kind of go around it and surround it. Our recommendation for this council would be, if that is what you choose to do, would be to set a timeframe around it that would allow this council to see the work come to conclusion, that you impanel it with a really good balance of stakeholders to this issue. There are a number of people who have come forward to the, out of the community who have advocated on this that could be drawn from. We think that you should really empower this committee to access the city staff that they would need to do this type of work. We've seen a lot of technical work get hung up with not having the type of access that they would need. And finally, I think it would be smart for this council to start to look at the other types of policy pieces that would need to go along with this, such as the continued work in zoning reform to get the zoning in the center part of our city squared up for transitions, the types of tax and fee structures and external funding that could be brought to bear around these sorts of issues, and the types of engagement with stakeholders that could begin to remedy some of this, that might not rise all the way up to what amortization would actually facilitate, which is only the most serious of cases where there's conflicts between sort of neighborhoods and other private enterprise and stakeholders. So we thank you for your time in considering this and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Shankles. Sid Sideman?
Sideman, I'm sorry, Sid. The handwriting is about as good as mine, I got to tell you.
My name is Sid Sideman. I live at 3202 20th Street, and I'm here to visit with you about 7-16. Now, very appropriately, some of my friends and affiliates of this, or act, whatever they are, neighbors, have already spoken a great deal of this. I wanted to share with you just one or two more examples of when, how we believe that the code has been, it has been reviewed. I certainly applaud what Mr. McKay said. The code has been reviewed, but if it's been reviewed, it's been reviewed mostly on paper. When the consultant came, he basically took whatever the zoning districts were at that particular moment, and just to start the process, said, okay, well, we're going to combine these into this, and these into this, and these into this, and painted a rather broad paintbrush of many, many, many areas, most of which are some of the old hodgepodge zoning from the older neighborhoods, the ones within the Loop. That maybe we put a door at Cafe J so there could be a bar, and it had to be C4. Well, that was the way it was back then. That doesn't mean it should be C4 in the future. But one of the examples, some of the examples I wanted to share with you right now, that to just color things green because they were coded that at the moment that this review came on to play. Right across the street from Monterey High School, where the band owned by LSD, four lots that the band practices on, green, HDR, potential of massive development right across the street, the side street to the east of Monterey High School. Even again, across the street from Monterey High School towards 50th, there are three single-family residences. One is homesteaded, painted green. Don't ask me why. Maybe they're behind a neighborhood commercial area that lent itself for that, because they probably had been designated that, but they've never been used as at their homes right now. You've got to, and to show the differences here, you've got Monterey Church of Christ on 58th and Louisville, high-density residential. You've got Christ the King, which has five times the actual physical footprint as single-family, SF2. You've got Lubbock Boys Club in the middle of 59th and Hartford, in that area real near the lake, high-density residential. Then you've got Plains Capital Bank on the corner of 50th and Indiana, SF2. So you do have, you do have spot HDR. You have a massive increase in development potential in areas that absolutely, had you gone and looked at the places with your own eyes rather than taking it on paper, it would immediately say, okay, we've got a little issue here on some of this. It is my opinion, and I'm requesting right now that this UDC, if you do approve it, that there be an amendment that changes everything that's green, HDR right now, put it MDR. That's the buffer that's required in the zoning anyway between HDR and single-family too, that in many of these instances, there is no buffer. It goes straight to single-family. So my request is that and urge you to either table approval of it or amend the broad and inconsistent paintbrush of HDR in established neighborhood, change all those to MDR where there is height and lot coverage restrictions. There is none in HDR. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dawn Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Dawn Richards. I live at 3105 20th Street. I'm here representing the Tech Terrace Neighborhood Association. My colleague, Mr. Murphy, and I usually have a one-two batting order on this. He addressed some substantive issues. I'm here to address a procedural issue with the UDC. It, I would prefer it stay the way it is under current law, but if it's going to be changed, I'm going to ask that you clarify it to make sure that there's no misunderstanding. I know I was surprised everyone to tell you that occasionally lawyers disagree with each other. So we need to have it clear. Under the current law now, I want, first of all, to concur with everything Mr. Murphy said, agree with him. Under current law now, if a application, if I file an application with a planning and zoning and it's denied, then the current law says, and it's not approved by the city council, then I have to wait 12 months before I can reapply. We think that occurred, but of course, we brought that up to tension, but the PNC, neither or the council, chose not to address that motion, but by the manner in which you rule, it made it moot, more or less. Under the current zoning change, under the UDC, Section 39.07032 and 39.07008, it says that if an application is filed with the planning and zoning and it is recommended against it, turned it down by the planning and zoning and denied by the city council. That's a major change. It's minor words, but it's a major change. Right now, it's not approved by the city council. This would take an affirmative action of denial by the city council. And so my point is, if I file an application with the PNC and I'm turned down, I have no reason to take it to the, to the city council. If the current law stays in place where a denial would require a three-fourths vote, I'm not going to take a chance on coming to you and getting, trying, and losing on a three-fourths vote. I'll just withdraw it, and then I'll refile it again at PNC, and I'll file it over and over and over again. You think, well, that's an exaggeration. No, it's not. We just had one, and that was the major case. We had four applications and five plans and four public hearings in a matter of about six months. That wears down the public participation. And so I'd ask you to look at that, and you'll, I know I looked at subsection B of that code, subsection- subsection D1B, the application currently under consideration includes property that was all a part of a previously denied case. That's good, but denied by whom? Denied by the P&amp;Z, or denied by the P&amp;Z and the city council? It's not clear, and I'm sure, depending on which side of that case I was on, I could argue the other side. Just make it clear, so it's clarified, so that we know what, what the rules are, and we don't have these issues. I appreciate your time, and I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Dawn. I was going to put you under oath, but... Terry Holman?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Terry Holman. I reside at 4,492nd Street. I want to, first of all, take my hat off to the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had a fairly deep dive when we met with Planning and Zoning Commission about 10 days ago. We were all given the opportunity to really get into the weeds and explain what our concerns were on the various aspects of the UDC. I thought it was a very good thorough discussion, and, you know, they, of course, have recommended that to you. We're, our little group that has been helping with this is in support of that, and we'll certainly be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Tanner here? Hold on just a second before you come up. There were, there were two, did you fill out two forms?
Yeah.
You want to speak twice? Is that what?
Just once, please.
Okay. I've got, I've got, yeah. Well, go ahead and come up. I'll take it out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Tanner Noble. I live at 4,169th Street. I had Mont fill out a speaking deal in case I didn't get here in time. So basically, I'm coming to you today as a citizen and as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'll bear with me for just a moment, I want to say some thank yous. I want to thank city staff, particularly Robbie Wallace and Kristen Sager. They have been very good to work with. Robbie got us to where we are today after taking over from several planning directors, and so thank you both. I want to say thank you to the group that was just talked about, Terry Holman, Mont McLendon, Chris Berry, and Corey Doolan. They put in thousands of hours on this, and I've told them before that a fraction of the city will actually know what they've done for, for our city, and it's to be commended. So I want to say that publicly. Also, I wanted to just say, this has been quite a process. I've been on P&amp;Z for, since 2019 now, so I've been here for most of, if not all of, the UDC meetings. By the way, I am in favor of item 7.16. We, we have, as a, as a commission, we're, we're a diverse board or commission, and we're made up of, you know, several of us have development businesses, or we're in the business of developing. And so this document will directly impact us. Other members are not directly impacted, but they had, they took it just as serious as the rest of us. And in fact, Ms. Tomlinson, she came to the meeting, and she literally had just post-it notes sticking out of her binder. She took it really ser, we all took it very seriously and worked very hard on it. And as Mr. Holman just said, you know, we did a fairly deep dive. I'm sorry, they did, they did a deeper dive than us, but we got into the weeds in this last meeting. We also heard from a lot of citizens, the Lubbock Compact group. I mean, we, we really were trying to figure out, what do we do with amortization? And the billboard issue, we, we really, really, really were looking at all the different possibilities. What you have before you is our recommendation as a result of all the hard work, and we just want you to know that we're in support of passing the UDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanner. Mr. McLendon, I think that makes you last, since there were two of Mr. Noble.
Well, I'm used to being leased, so it's nice to go last. My name is Mont McLendon. I live at 16th and Salem and work at 1500 Broadway. I'm here in support of 7.16, the UDC. Wanted to take a minute and put this moment in context. In the comp plan, the 2040 plan adopted by the city as a policy statement years ago, one of the keystone recommendations was a wholesale reimagining or addressing of the development regime, the regulations for the city. Included in that recommendation was some consideration of additional buffering and some, some thought as to how we might better do mixed use and those sorts of things in the city. What you have before you today is a unanimous recommendation from P&amp;Z that, in my opinion, is a dramatic improvement. It in many ways modernizes our codes. It simplifies uses in many instances, and most importantly, I think, it, it works hard to keep much of what makes Lubbock Lubbock. And so I would encourage you, as you take up the UDC, to be mindful of that unanimous recommendation and adopt the UDC as presented. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. All right, that concludes citizen comments. We will next move to our minutes. I entertain a motion under 5.1 to approve. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of agenda item 5.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries seven zero. We'll move right into our consent agenda. We have a few pools today. We have 6.3, 6.14, 16, 19, and 20, and we have a removal of 6.7. We'll put that back on the next agenda May 9th. Have some clarification to clean up there. So at this time, we'll first go back to 6.3, which is a Public Safety Capital Improvement Project. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Jump right into item 6.3. Item 6.3 is a budget amendment. I've read it back and forth and forwards and backwards, and I think the easiest way for me to explain is this. The city council, several years back, dedicated enough money out of our American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds to fully fund the difference in the cost of your new public health facility. After that happened, Lubbock County elected to join us and to make that a joint facility, and they provided $3.5 million in their ARPA dollars for that. We are now backing out $3.5 million of our original commitment. We still will have over $4 million of our ARPA in it, but we are backing out the equivalent amount of the county's dollars to get back in front of the council at a later date for you to use that $3.5 million in ARPA for other projects that benefit the city.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any comments on 6.3?
Questions, Mayor?
Ms. Joy?
The, at this point, the total funding is $8 million, a little bit more, is that correct?
Yeah, it's going to be just a little better than that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Next move to 6.14.
Certainly, Mayor, I'll cover that one just very quick. This one was a question that we were asked. This is a street use license, a street use license is granted from the city to a private party for things that may be in the public right-of-way. In this case, it happens to be a masonry fence. That fence has been where it is for a little over 20 years now, so the street use license is run in five-year increments. The first 20 years has expired. We're now coming back to you to continue that. So not a new item, just setting up the next sequence in time.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions on 6.14? All right, 6.16. I'll again turn that over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 6.16, council, this is the continuation of your efforts to implement the results of our successful street bond election held last November. Specifically, this is the purchase of a single tract in the southwest corner of Upland and 34th. That tract is needed to accommodate the right-of-way, both east and west on 34th and north and south on Upland. So we have a contract in front of you. This one is a ratification. I have signed an option so that we can secure this property. Council, if you choose to approve this, we will move forward, and you've acquired right-of-way for two of your pieces of the upcoming road bond work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any questions or comments? Moving right into 6.19?
6.19 is a resolution from Facilities Monument, uh, Facilities Management. Try that again. Specifically, the award of a contract with Lee Lewis Construction Incorporated. This is for the construction of the Lubbock Police Department Forensic and Property Warehouse Facility. City council embarked, really kind of got started in 2017, and then by 2018, embarked on what we called the Public Safety Improvement Project. Very ambitious. That was the construction of your three new patrol division stations. Those are all complete and in service. That was also a new municipal court facility. It is complete and in service, and I believe we have a upcoming ribbon cutting that we'll soon have on that. The final two elements of that proposal, the larger piece of it is the construction of a new police headquarters. It is immediately outside our front doors, over on 15th Street. Will open probably late this summer for service. The final piece then is the forensics and property warehouse facility. So council, with this item, you will now have awarded and then very soon started construction on the final pieces of that very large project that we had.
All right, Ms. Joy?
And are all of those projects funded currently?
Yes, ma'am. Those are all funded.
And they were funded at, at that time, out of, out of a CO, correct?
The, the original $60 million was a CO. It was estimated, if I recall, to cost our taxpayers roughly three and a half cents, and it came in at two cents. And that was really the growth of Lubbock that reduced that. All of that was done, and no tax levy has been added in over three years for this project.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Atkinson. We'll next move to agenda item 6.20. We'll leave, Ms. Wells?
Good afternoon, council and mayor. This, this is an agreement between the city of Lubbock and University Medical Center to enable the Health Department to utilize Cerner, which is the EMR system that UMC uses. Cerner will be provided to the department at a reduced rate through a federal Stark exemption, and that's a discount of 80% off the regular price.
That's good.
Yes, that's a good thing. The benefits of this move will include secure messaging between UMC and Health Department staff. It will also improve workflows for Dr. Cook, our medical director, because he will be in one, one record system instead of having to utilize two. It will also improve coordination between the Health Department Laboratory and the UMC Laboratory. We move specimens back and forth most days. And then this will also allow us to have some local support for our medical record system. Right now, we're with a contractor out of North Carolina, and this will give us IT support through UMC to help us with any upgrades. This project's the first part of our larger project within public health to upgrade our infrastructure to ensure that we capture all available revenue for clinical care and wraparound services provided by public health. Over the next two months, we'll be bringing some additional contracts before council. One will be a provider credentialing and billing contract. Another one will be a consultant to look at our revenue management and a possible one to expand pharmacy services. The current, the cost of this EMR system will be a savings to the city. We currently spend $1,820 per month for services. This will take the cost down to $489 per month after we pay $2,445 in implementation costs. This system will not do our billing for us, so we will need that additional contract with the billing provider. That was an RFP that's closing out right now. So there will be some additional costs. So I anticipate that we'll break about even.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Ms. Wells, tell us why this is so important to the Health Department. Obviously, we haven't done it before, but now it's, it's important because of what reason?
There is a new revenue stream available to public health for the provision of uncompensated care to members of our community. So dollars that we use, Lubbock City tax dollars that go into providing that care, there is a fund, it's $500 million for the state of Texas that's available to public health and mental health, to pull down funding to reimburse the city. So having a better medical record system will allow us to better document that charity care that we're providing and hopefully be able to pull down those funds annually to better support public health services moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Perfect. All right, council, I believe that takes care of all the pools. Again, 6.7 is removed. So with no objection, council, I entertain a motion to approve 6.1 through 6.24 exclusive of 6.7. Mr. Massengo? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. I have a motion in a second. All in favor of approval of agenda item 6.1 through 6.24 exclusive of 6.7, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries seven zero. We will next move to our regular agenda, and we have several public hearings. We have 12 public hearings that are scheduled. I'm going to take these individually because I anticipate there are a few here we need to take into further discussion. If there are ones that council doesn't anticipate that we need further discussion of after the public hearing, we can go ahead and just move through those a little, a little more quickly and open those public hearings up. I anticipate at this time, 7.1, 7.4, possibly 7.6 is those that may need further discussion. If council has any others they may want me to pull specifically, I can do so. 7.14, again, is not a public hearing. That's just, just for everyone's remembrance. That was the variance in the alcohol beverage department. All right, so with that, if council's okay with that, then we'll go ahead and start with 7.1, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Sager.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Item 7.1 is zone case 1139C. The request is for a zone change from local retail district C2 to commercial district C4 with a specific use for a bar. We sent out 17 notifications, receiving zero in favor and five in opposition. This property is located south of 50th Street, east of University Avenue. Here's a notification map showing the five adjacent properties that responded in opposition, an aerial view of the subject property. There is currently a multi-tenant shopping center on the property, and you can see there is residential to the southeast, a church to the south, other commercial and a school to the north, an additional commercial and residential to the west. The current zoning is C2. There is adjacent apartment medical, C2A, C3, C2, R1, and R2 zoning. Feature land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The feature land use map designates this area for commercial land uses, and while the request for a zone change to C4 is in conformance with the designation, the specific use for a bar would not be appropriate in this area due to proximity to residential zoning and a school. The zone change is not in conformance with the zoning ordinance and not appropriate at this location. There is a school, measured property line to property line, about 60 feet away, Richard Millburn Academy. property line to property line about 60 feet away, Richard Millburn Academy. The zone change is not compatible with the surrounding area. The property is located north of 52nd Street, which is designated as a local street, east of University Avenue, which is a principal arterial. Staff recommended denial of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote. Therefore, a supermajority of six out of seven votes will be required for the request to be approved. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Kristin. Go ahead and move with 7.1 this time, Kristin. I'm going to go ahead and open this one to a public hearing. We'll start a public hearing for Agenda Item 7.1. Again, if you've never similar to citizen comments, if you wish to speak, we'll begin with those in opposition and then move after opposition to those in favor. You will be able to approach the microphone, state your name and your address, and then make your statement. So at this time, the public hearing is now open for Agenda Item 7.1. If anyone is wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 7.1, you may approach now. All right. Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7.1? All right. The public hearing is now closed. As to Agenda Item 7.1, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.1?
Move to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill.
Southbound.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right. Any discussion on Agenda Item 7.1? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Ms. Krista Sager.
Yes, ma'am.
Couple of questions. How many times has something of this nature at this actual location come to us in the past seven years?
I didn't look quite that far, but in June of 2021, Zone Case 1139B was a request for a zone change from C2 to C4 specific use for a nightclub, and it was denied by city council. In July of 2022, an alcohol separation variance for Paradise Lounge was also denied.
An additional question.
Mm-hmm.
Are there other bars or establishments that serve alcoholic beverages in this strip piece?
It's possible. I do not know that at this time.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Any other questions for Ms. Sager? Ms. Joy?
Ms. Sager, is this a different applicant or the same applicant as the one we heard in '22?
This is a different one.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other discussion or questions or statements on Agenda Item 7.1?
Thanks.
All right. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.1, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Nay. Motion fails 0 to 7. All right. We will now next move to Agenda Item 7.2, zone change from C2 to C3. Counsel, are you comfortable on 7.2 and 7.3? Is there any, feel comfortable with us opening those public hearings at this point? All right. Well, let's go ahead and open up. At this time, I will open the public hearings as to Agenda Item 7.2 and 7.3. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Items 7.2 and 7.3, you may step forward now. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of either Agenda Item 7.2 or 7.3, you may step forward now.
Good afternoon. Corey Doolan with AMD Engineering at 651568th Street. I'm just here to answer any questions. If you have any, just want to let you know that I'm here and available for questions.
Both 7-2 and 7-3.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7.2 or 7.3? All right. I will now close the public hearing as to Item 7.2 and 7.3. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Items 7.2 and 7.3? Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. On a second, is there any further discussion on Agenda Items 7.2 and 7.3? All right. All in favor of approval of 7.2 and 7.3, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign. All right. Agenda Items 7.2 and 7.3 carry 7-0. All right. Ms. Sager, I'll turn it over to you for 7.4.
Item 7.4 is Zone Case 3480. The request is for a zone change from single-family district R1 to two-family district R2. We sent out 22 notifications, and we did not receive any in favor or in opposition. This property is located north of 24th and west of Indiana Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is a residence that is within a residential area with some additional commercial buildings along Indiana Avenue. The current zoning is R1. There is additional R1 and apartment medical within this area. The future land use plan designates this property for low-density residential land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses. R2 would be a step up from that to medium-density residential. The request is not in conformance with the zoning ordinance and not compatible with the surrounding area. The property is located north of 24th, which is a local street, and east of Ithaca Avenue, which is designated as a collector. Staff recommended denial of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Kristin, what's your understanding of the goal here?
Yes.
The overall general goal that they were trying to accomplish?
The applicant indicated that they purchased this property as a duplex. So at some point, this residence was illegally converted to a duplex, and when they purchased it, it was functioning, had tenants in it, and so they are just trying to get the appropriate zoning so they can continue that use.
Do we know how long ago this goes back as being used?
I do not.
Ms. Joy?
Were there any objections from the neighbors because this is, sits in between residential?
Right. We did not have any responses, and no one spoke at the meeting in opposition.
Mr. McBrayer?
I was familiar with the area myself, and even though it's not in conformance, I don't think it really poses much of a conflict with the other uses that are in that area. Of course, a lot of medical uses around there. I think that it's, I can't see any real reason to object to it, and I'll be in favor of it.
All right. Well, seeing that, let me go ahead and ask if there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.4.
No group.
All right. I don't know who gave the first. Yeah. Mr. Massengill, and thank you, Ms. Joy, for the second. All right. Now I'll open up for discussion, Mr. McBrayer. Yes, I'm sorry.
We've got a public hearing. I don't think it was, was the public?
Thanks. I moved on. Yeah, we've enclosed. I think we moved straight to discussion. Thank you for the reminder. He has to remind me at least once at city council meeting that I've done something like that. All right. Well, thank you for that. Before we get into discussion, let me go ahead and continue on with the public hearing on 7.4. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.4, you may approach. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 7.4, you may approach. I was about to rob you of your opportunity.
I was going to say, I don't want to dig a hole now. So, no, you're, I'm here on behalf of 310 Lubbock. My name's Landon Quigley, 1519 Churchill Avenue in Woolford, 79382. Yeah, we purchased it under the belief it was a duplex. It wasn't until, and I think it's always been a duplex. There was just, there's three entrances, one of which that would be a side entrance into a room of sorts, which is just odd over there. It wasn't until we had a tenant in the back that, she was getting evicted, LHA got involved, informed her that it was a single family, which led us here. So we're just trying to make it right. Obviously, we're under the, we didn't do, we didn't add any structural elements to it. It's been a duplex for a long time. It's been something for a long time, a medical officer duplex. So, and I'm here for questions, too.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Ms. Patterson-Harris? All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 7.4? All right. We'll close the public hearing as of 7.4 and take it back to square one to entertain a motion to approve 7.4. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right. Now we can open this up for further discussion. Mr. McBrayer, I think you had mentioned you were in favor. All right. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Can we, the property owner, can he come forth, forth, please, again?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And you indicated that whoever the tenant was previously had been evicted.
Correct.
So are there any tenants living at this location at this time?
There is not. Not since this happened.
And it is your desire to continue in the same fashion as a duplex?
Yes, ma'am. I think it would require more work to make it a single-family residence than to make it.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear as to what your desire was.
Right. Yes. Just to keep it as a duplex. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further discussion, comments on 7.4? All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.4, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries 7-0. We'll next move to Agenda Item 7.5. There's no objection from counsel. I will go ahead and open this up for a public hearing. Now I'll open the public hearing as to Agenda Item 7.5. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.5, you may step forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 7.5, you may step forward now.
Good afternoon. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at 1601 Avenue N. I'm representing Ford Development on this request. This is some of the Indiana frontage, almost all the way to 146th Street. This is a slight step up from the AM zoning that this tract currently has, but it's still a transition step down from the IDP zoning that's immediately south of us. We're asking for C2 zoning. It's our hope that we might be able to construct a gymnastics-style facility there, and that we need the C2 zoning to be able to allow us to build up to 35,000 square feet. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 7.5? All right. I will now close the hearing as to 7.5. Entertain a motion to approve 7.5?
Move to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Any discussion or questions of Ms. Sager or Mr. Holman on 7.5? All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right. 7.5 carries 7-0. Next, we will move to 7.6. I believe this one is back in front of us again that had been here in the past. Turn it over to you, Ms. Sager.
Item 7.6 is Zone Case 1977I. The request is to rezone property from apartment medical AM and restrict a local retail district C2A to local retail C2. We sent out 33 notifications. We did not receive any in favor or in opposition. This property is located north of 73rd, west of Slide Road. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is an existing commercial building on the lot with residential to the north and west, additional commercial to the south, and residential on the east side of Slide Road. Current zoning is AM and C2A with additional C2A and R1 to the south and R1 to the northeast and west. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a site plan provided by the applicant. In their previous case, they were proposing three drive-through lanes. They have reduced it to two. Future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. This request is in conformance with this designation. The zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. Slide Road is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sager. All right. This time, I will now open up the public hearing as to Agenda Item 7.6. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to 7.6, you may step forward now. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 7.6, you may step forward now.
Good afternoon. Tyler Gentry with 17 Services. I reside at 4,005 76th Street. I'm here representing the ownership. We previously heard this application, and there was a number of concerns brought to counsel. We feel like we have worked with the neighbors to resolve each of those concerns. Kristin did a wonderful job discussing everything, of course, but one thing I will add is that there was a concern over an opening in a rear fence, and that has been closed in. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 7.6? All right. The public hearing as to Agenda Item 7.6 is now closed. Entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.6. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right. Any further discussion on 7.6? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I just want to say that this is a perfect example of businesses working with neighbors. So thank you for doing that. Communication is key, and I think it makes it easier for us to make decisions, and thank you for going through lanes.
Ms. Joy?
Mr. Gentry, you're still there?
Yes, ma'am.
What changes did you make from the first time you were here until now?
Okay, so the ATM machine has been removed, and so that will no longer be a drive-through. It will be positioned on the building for walk-up only. So there is two lanes, one commercial and one public. That is the biggest change, is two lanes. And then, of course, there was concern over the fence. That's been closed in.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, I just also wanted to say thank you. You know, one thing I think everybody likes to see when we do this is compromise, and so I appreciate you guys going back. I spoke with the applicant as well as many of the neighbors in the neighborhood who met with the applicant and had a chance to put some input in, and they were all very, very pleased with how the changes were made and very supportive of this moving forward. So just wanted to say thank you for that.
Any other comments on 7.6? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 7.6, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right. Motion carries 7-0. All right. With counsel's approval, unless there's one that would like me to specifically pull apart on 7.7 through 7.12, I'd like to pull those together into one public hearing. All right. 7.6, or excuse me, 7.7 through 7.12. All right. This time, I will, we will conduct a public hearing on Items 7, 7 through 7.12. I will open up the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak in opposition to any of those aforementioned items. You may step forward at this time. All right. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Items 7.7 through 7.12, you may step forward now. Please state the item which you are speaking on, as well as your name and address, Wesley.
Yes, sir. My name is Wes Everett. I am here representing Beaton Bow Homes, 6305 82nd Street, and we're here to answer any questions on our new development called Cypress Ranch. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, my name's Andy Bean with Lubbock Land Company at 12203 Quaker. I'm here on 7.8 as the applicant. We are shifting the line 60 feet to allow for three one-acre pad sites along 114th Street. I'm here to answer any questions.
Good afternoon. Talking about Item 7.7, Kyle Brockman with Kimley Horn, 4411 98th Street, representing Atmos. Just here if you have any questions on 7.7.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Items 7, 7 through 7.12? All right. The public hearing as to 7.7 through 7.12 All right, the public hearing as to 7.7 through 7.12 is now closed. Entertain a motion to approve Agenda Items 7.7 through 7.12. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Is there any questions of Ms. Sager or further discussion on Agenda Items 7.7 through 7.12? All right, all in favor of approval of those Agenda items, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion to approve 7.7 through 7.12 passes 7-0. All right, we'll next move to the second reading on the annexation of 197.05 acres for our veteran cemetery. Ms. Sager?
Thank you. As stated, this is second reading of an annexation for approximately 197 acres located east of East Loop 289 on the north and south sides of 50th Street. I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Ms. Joy? All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. I'd entertain a motion on 7.13. It was a split tie, so I'm just gonna have to say that was a motion by Ms. Martinez-Garcia and a second by Ms. Joy. There's no pride of motion ship up here. All in favor of approval of 7.13, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7.13 carries 7-0. All right, we'll next move to 7.14. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Sager.
Thank you. Item 7.4 is a request for a separation variance to allow a business to obtain a TABC license. The request is for a restaurant, Tipsy's Taco Shack, Taqueria, and Mexican Restaurant. It is located south of 50th Street, east of Avenue Q. There is an elementary, Hodges Elementary, that is within 300 feet of this location. And you can see this request is previously considered by council on three different occasions. The request today is for the restaurant to obtain a mixed beverage permit, mixed beverage late-hours permit, and a food and beverage permit. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Dr. Wilson?
Ms. Sager, can you explain the difference with permits that they're, that they're asking for with the late-hours permit?
The late-hours will allow them to stay open until 2:00 in the morning.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I do have a question. Is the restaurant still in existence because I was a little bit confused?
My understanding is they are open and operating, but they are not serving since they do not have the TABC license.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager?
I have questions.
Dr. Wilson, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, I should've, I guess, lumped them together with the late hours. So, for the business to run as a restaurant, I believe our applicant said she's only open till 10:00. Did that, did she need the late-hours permit or would the other one suffice to cover just the restaurant to be open? Does she need it till 2:00? So, I'm trying to figure out if the restaurant is only open till 10:00 p.m.
That, yes. I mean, if she does not plan on staying open past 10:00 p.m., it would not be necessary.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia, I'm sorry.
My question is more for the folks involved.
Okay.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager? And she'll be around, I'm sure. All right. No other questions from Ms. Sager on 7.14? I'd entertain a motion to approve 7.14. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, you had questions of the applicant, I believe, and it's time for discussion. Ms. Madrid, yeah, if you'll go ahead and come on up.
In the past, I emailed Mr. Bill Stubblefield, but I never got a respond back because I also offered to not sell alcohol till after 4:00. And then, someone on the board mentioned about the after-school program, but I never got an answer back. When I did, when I first started, I went to the school because TABC requires you to inform the school or the church. They were all for it. The principal was as well. But once Mr., once we came and Mr., this LISD came, then I wasn't allowed to even talk to anybody at the school or leave menus because they were afraid. So, I've done everything I'm supposed to do. Like, I literally went and told them, "Hey, my name's Paulina. We're gonna do this." This was way before we were completed and they were all okay with it. Then, when we came for the separation variance is when they opposed it, but no one's never called me or anything or even tried to reach out to me. I've gone to the school, I emailed Mr. Stubblefield, but he never emailed me back.
When was the last time that you communicated to them?
It was, mm...
Since we met on this last...
February. February. No, you weren't on the, some of you guys were not on the board at that time. This time, I only spoke to like, because I'm involved with Monterey High School, the teachers and parents thing for seniors. And I've talked to them, but not Ms. Rollo or Mr. Stubblefield or Lala or any of them. I've talked to Lala before.
So, the other question that I have, people that are coming to eat, are they also bringing their own beer?
Yes, ma'am, they are. It's been, we've been doing BYOB and you bring your own beer since we opened. So, there's beer there. But we just don't make no money, no taxes for the city, no nothing. You get to bring it in, you drink it, and they leave. They don't, we don't play music where you stay. There's nowhere to dance. We're a naughty club, we're a restaurant.
So, what is the difference? I mean, if you're not...
Because when people come in, they ask us, "Do you guys have margaritas or do you have a beer?" And we're like, "No, we don't sell it, but you can go buy it and bring it." They leave and don't come back.
But you have, they have the option of bringing their own?
Yes. They have the option to run to Walgreens, go grab it, bring it in. Because we are BYOB, since we're not licensed through TABC, we don't have to like, even if a mother came in with her 16-year-old and she gave her a shot of tequila, we cannot tell her no. But if we were TABC compliant, then we could not let her give it to a minor. But other than that, even if husband is 22 and he's married to a 14-year-old, he can give her alcohol or shots or whatever they bring in, we cannot tell them no. And we close at 10:00 because we're literally just a restaurant and my husband and my daughter, my daughter's a senior, my husband works full-time, and so we close at 10:00 every day.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Ms. Madrid, it's the same question I was kind of posing to Ms. Sager. My question is, why ask for the variance for late night to 2:00 a.m. if you're, if you close at 10:00 as a restaurant?
Because when we first started, we turned in the application to the zoning and that application to stay open till 2:00 has to be put in with TABC. And so, the application was put in in order to stay open until 2:00 a.m. And so, the application's always been like that. We just cleaned it up with the name, you know, we just changed the name and changed the name, but the application's always been like that. But I'm okay with losing it because we leave at 10:00.
So, Ms. Sager, just for clarification, any restaurant that serves alcohol, do they have to have that late-night permit to 2:00 if they close early for TABC reasons?
No, I mean...
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because if we're using it as a restaurant, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to do bar hours. Does that make sense? That's what I'm trying to get at, Madrid.
Right. So, if, if she plans to close at 10:00 and not stay open until 2:00 a.m., council could amend the resolution to remove that late-hours permit that's listed on the resolution and she could amend her application with TABC.
But if approved, like it would be right now, it could change and be to 2:00 a.m. bar, like hours at any time?
The way it's drafted currently, yes.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just want to make sure that things are clarified. So, your, your customers are bringing their own alcohol?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're just serving the food, just selling them the meals?
Yes.
So, and your issue with that is what?
We're not making any money off the beer they're bringing in. So, if a plate's $10 and they're bringing in a 12-pack, you're sitting using my light, my water, my gas, my restrooms, and I'm only getting $10.
So, have you had conversations with your customers about the fact that they're running up your, your bills and they're sitting there drinking their stuff?
No, ma'am, because...
I'm just asking. Because this is, I'm not sure if, and I want to ask Ms. Sager as well, if this is something that is permissible, given that she's a restaurant and not a lounge? So, I may just be confusing things.
So, I don't quite understand your question.
I think she does.
Yeah.
BYOB is permissible because they are not selling, so as long as they are not, you know, charging a covered charge to enter the restaurant and then giving something away for free, that would be selling. And they're not actually selling. They can allow BYOB and allow customers to bring it in.
Sir, we're gonna have to ask you if you'll take your seat until you're called for. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Last time that we heard this, part of the issue was public perception. You said you changed with everything they wanted, but one of the issues of concern for LISD folks was that, it's called Tipsy's.
Yes.
You didn't change the name. You still have the same name and you added Taco Shop.
But Tipsy's on the sign is like this little up there and...
I know, but their concern, and I recall this clearly, was the name was Tipsy's.
The name Tipsy's, yes.
And it implies that you're Tipsy. And I think that was their big concern. So, you know, I think for me, it's hard to, you know, I'm all about supporting a woman-owned business, a Latina, but I feel like there's been a lack of communication and for me, it's hard to support you because of the fact that there should have been more effort since the last time we were here.
Well, because if I change the whole complete name, I have to erase all the applications and start from scratch and you're looking at hundreds of dollars.
I know, I understand, but look, you put Taco Shop, you changed your whole logo, but you didn't communicate.
Because I didn't have to pay for everything all over again. I just had to pay for a sign and call and change it with the IRS, with the Comp Patrol Office, with the city, with anybody. I mean, we're not making...
I did that anyway by adding the Taco Shop. You see what I'm saying? I just wish there would have been better communication, but I appreciate all your effort.
Thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
Do you have any objection if we were to amend the resolution to take out the late-hours?
No, ma'am, sir, I would be willing to take out the late-hours.
All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris, did you have another comment?
I'm trying to understand the purpose of that if the request is to be able to serve the alcohol because you're less than fif, I mean, less than 300 feet from a school. My understanding, while I heard the school say, I don't recall them saying anything about the name.
Yes.
But I do, the past two times, recall them saying, "Our concern is the alcohol that close to the school." And none of that has changed because even as your restaurant, you're allowing it to be brought into your establishment. So, as it comes to me, you're ignoring what their, their concern is.
So, but I'm trying to work with them because I'm needing to, I mean, I don't have to sell the alcohol. I can stay BYOB and the alcohol's already there.
Yeah. I'm understa, I get, I get, I'm just asking, asking a question.
And, and the school...
I just want to understand what their concern is. In addition to the letters from Ms. Rollo and a couple of the educators that were submitted this time.
Mm-hmm. There's them other bars that are there, like, the school can protest it with TABC because I get, I got a call from TABC and they asked me what's the holdup. I told them, they said, "Well, if they'd like, they could protest the other bars." But they're bars and I'm not, I'm a restaurant.
And I'll share with you like I did the first time you saw me. I wasn't on the council at that time, but I guarantee you, had I been here, that I would be standing in the same frame because of the children, when I have educators whose job it is to stand and make sure things are well and safe with the children that come to their, their facility each day. I'm gonna stand with them. I was, I'm a mom. I have grandkids and all of that. And I would that someone would stand with me and my children, as we say, that we don't want that near our grandchildren. So, that's what I hear and that's what I recall. And what I'm also hearing today, the concerns that LISD has indicated, has still been ignored.
Okay. And my, my grandkid, he goes to Mrs. O's Daycare. I'm not okay with the pub being there either then, but you guys told them yes. A separation variance. And they're on the same property versus I'm divided by a property line.
No, you're not divided by a property line. There's, there's, you are divided by a property line, so there's not more than 300 feet.
From the property line to property line.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Madrid.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I think I'll say, I kind of understand where you're coming from. There seems to be your position of, well, it doesn't seem fair and you ask for reasons why and other people have, but I wasn't on the council then. And so, I'm not gonna speak to what people have done in the past. I have concerns when we have bars named Tipsy's around kids and right in it, very close to kids. And I have concerns when schools step up and say, "I have a concern about a bar being close." Whether there's one or 100 there, yours is the one that's before me personally in my vote today. So, I really do, part of me as a business owner says, "I understand, but, but I'm gonna stand in the gap for the kids because I think that's the right thing to do for me personally. I can't speak for anyone else." But I'll vote no against you because I believe the school doesn't feel it's appropriate. If they came forward and they said, "You know what? We've talked to her and the lines of communication are open and there's some things to be done," that could change in the future. And as you have already spoken and stated, there's nothing to prohibit you coming before us as many times as you want for a license. But that's, that's gonna be my position with you today. All right? Anybody else, any, have any other discussion or questions? Counting your money? All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.14, please say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed by like sign? Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails 2-5. All right, we'll now next move to 7.15. Mr. Kostalich?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 7.15 before you today is asking the council to consider a resolution authorizing staff to publish a notice of intent and call a public hearing in a future meeting for a reinvestment zone to be created on what is now X Fab's property, that is north of the North Loop 289, west of University Avenue. So, tonight's action, like I said, if approved, only calls for the notice of intent to be put out and to call a public hearing for the next meeting. You see the schedule below and I'll summarize this to say, ultimately, X Fab will be coming to you to consider a Chapter 312 property tax abatement. We've done this about three times for X Fab before. These are usually five-year declining scale property tax abatements. That is not what is being considered today, but under Chapter 312, in order to consider that property tax abatement, they have to be in a, in a reinvestment zone. So, that's why we're starting this process to call for the public hearing, to publish notice of intent in order to get this ball rolling to ultimately get to that June 13th council meeting. Mayor and Council, with that, I'll pause for any questions.
This is just the notice provision at this point, correct?
This is just the notice and to, to call the public hearing at the next council.
Go back one slide, Luke.
Yes, sir.
So, the consideration will be June 13?
That will be the ultimate consideration for the tax payment contract.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Joy?
Why do they need a reinvestment zone?
Under Chapter 312, in order to receive a property tax of abatement, you have to be within a reinvestment zone. Those reinvestment zones only last five years, so it's time, because they're not under a reinvestment zone currently.
Makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, this time I'd ask for a motion on 7.15. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Any other discussion or questions on 7.15? All in favor of approval of 7.15, please say aye. Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7-0 carries, 7.15 carries 7-0. All right, we will now next move to 7.16. Eric?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good to be with you. Eric Rahino, Assistant City Manager. So, after nearly...
So after nearly four years, the Unified Development Code is before you for the first time for official action, with the exception of the meeting we had previously. This has been a very lengthy and in-depth process. It's required a significant amount of work by a lot of people, including the City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, city staff, and the community. As you recall, the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission held a joint public hearing on March 22nd. The Planning and Zoning Commission then met following that two additional times to take up the UDC, and that was their only business on the agenda on April 3rd and April 13th. After a very lengthy meeting on April 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted by a vote of six to zero unanimously to recommend the Unified Development Code and the newly proposed zoning map to the City Council. So that's what you have before you today. That recommendation is made up of four different documents. First of all, you have the February 20th draft of the Unified Development Code, which you have a hard copy of that was provided before the hearing. You also have two amendment lists that were provided shortly after the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend those following their meeting April 13th, and then lastly, you have the newly proposed zoning map with the new districts proposed in the Unified Development Code. If the City Council decides to move forward today with the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the UDC, I think it's really important to note that, you know, this is going to be, this is an overhaul of over a 40-year old document, over, you know, a lot has changed in the last 40 years. It's important that moving forward, that this is a living, breathing, and ever-changing document, ever-evolving document as we move forward. The further the city moves into the implementation of the UDC, it's important to understand that there may be some amendments necessary, changes, upgrades as times change. It also may be, with this being a complete overhaul, first overhaul in nearly over 40 years, a huge task. It's important that we also keep in mind that we may even need some proposed changes, amendments before it takes effect. So one of staff's recommendations today is that if you decide to move forward and adopt, that you allow a grace period between adoption and effective date. Today, you have an ordinance before you that will allow you to adopt the UDC as proposed, as recommended by the P and Z and city staff at this time. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Eric. Real quick, I think the 7.16 has an implementation date of July 31st or the 1st? July 1st. You have any proposed date or any length of time that if we pass today a new implementation date that you would propose or suggest?
I think to allow staff sufficient time and to line it up with our fiscal year of October 1 would be staff recommendation for an effective date.
Thank you. All right, we have a proposed UDC in front of us. I would ask for a motion to approve what's been proposed and presented in front of us at 7.16.
Mayor.
Mr. Massengill?
My apologies. I'd like to make a motion acknowledging the change in date in the ordinance from July 1 to October 1 to approve the document.
Chad, would that be just, would that be considered an amendment, or are we just changing the date?
Well, it's an amendment, if that's the intent. You can amend it to October 1 as part of your motion, and second, if that's the intent.
Yeah.
That was my intent.
Very good. That it's been, the motion is to amend it, yes, sir.
Hold on just a second, Ms. Joy. Let's, Ms. Joy asked for a break a moment ago, and my watch is telling me to stand, and I probably need to talk with Chad about the proper language on that and then give a clarification to those that have asked. So let's take about a five-minute break. Let's be adjourned to 4:00 p.m. Again, back again. Mr. Massengill? Correct me if I'm wrong. I think I have a little discussion with Chad. I think your amendment was the proposed ordinance has a start date of July 1 of 2023, so in a sense, implementation would begin, and all applications for the new development filed on or after July 1. Are you proposing that this would be, that all applications for new development that are filed would be on or after October 1 of 2023?
Yeah, Mayor, I believe you correctly conveyed my intent on that motion.
All right. Does that explain it to everyone of council, understand implementation would be October 1? All right, so I have a motion and a second. We'll open up this for discussion. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
I just want to thank all the staff for all of their dedication and hard work, and I don't know if we can say that, but I know that it's taken a lot of time and hours and it is very appreciated, and I also want to thank the citizens because they haven't all agreed, but it's been very educational to see the different perspectives. But I do want to say one thing. You know, I am all about listening to the citizens, but sometimes, you know, we're citizens too, and I don't think that everyone has listened to the needs of certain districts, specifically District 1 and 2. And as I drove on 34th and Q one day, I could not help to notice how many billboards were there, and I thought, "Who advocated for us? Did anybody advocate for us? We can't keep throwing all of the billboards in just 1 and 2." And I don't think that that's fair, but at the same time, I appreciate the efforts that have been made in the past to prevent any more sign pollution, if you will, because I think from seeing the pictures that former Mayor Allen Henry presented demonstrating, you know, billboards and signs that cluttered our skies and that really made an improvement. But I think that we have to grow amicably in the city, and, you know, I am glad that we're gonna have a little bit of extra time to review all of this because I think that we, just like some of the things we've heard today, we've come to a compromise, and I feel like we need to come to a compromise in that particular subject.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo Christie's comments about thanking the staff. This is an unbelievably large project. I'll correct Mr. Riano about four years. Actually, this started for many of us in 2016. Well, it started for Latrell Sheila and I in 2016, when that council then approved the commitment and the dollars to take a hard look at the comprehensive land use plan. We have been zoning by exception for several years in this community, and although we have healthy incremental growth, the volume of our growth justifies change, just like we change everything in our community. We assess our water supply. We assess our traffic infrastructure. We assess our electrical power needs, as you see us all talk about all the time, and it's time to overhaul and adopt a new code by which we plan and develop our community for many years forward. I think the words "modernize and simplify" are correct. I believe that this is a living document, that you will never, ever approve a perfected document, and you'll see as this develops, and it's my hope that we have a time to address some cleanup between now, assuming this body approves this on October 1, you'll see me suggest a look back in the ordinance, whether that's a five-year look back to ensure that whoever sits in these seats takes a look at it, and that way, we're not, we don't look up and we've been, you know, living with a document that was drafted in the 1980s. So I think it's time to adopt it. I don't think our work ends after our second read. I think we have a responsibility as a council, as a staff, as a community, to continually look at this. There's mechanisms in place for if there's a, if something pops up and we need to address, that's why you have a Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's why the process starts there and comes through the council. So I feel comfortable. Again, I'm thankful for all the work put into this, staff and otherwise. I'm grateful for that, but I'm in support of what the Planning and Zoning Commission has submitted to the council, and I'm looking forward to voting. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Any other discussion? Mr. McBrayer?
Yeah, I want to not only thank the staff, but the community members who have worked hard on this too. There's been a lot of input, not just from developers, but people who represent neighborhood associations, people who represent other community organizations. They've all worked very hard on this. It is not the holy writ when we get it done. It can be changed. It can be amended, and we have a period of time that will allow us to address some of the concerns that have been addressed today, some concerns that I do believe do need to be addressed with it, but we do need to have a document we can move forward with and begin that process, and I think we're at a good point where we need to take that step and be pretty confident that when we move forward on October 1, we're gonna have something that continues to make this a very livable city for its citizens, for all its citizens in every part of Lubbock. That's what we have to be concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Holy writ. I'm gonna, I like it. It's from a appellate lawyer partner. Any other discussion? Ms. Joy?
Well, I think we need a special thanks to Robbie Wallace. Robbie, where'd you go? There you are. We posted this document February, what's the exact date on that, Robbie? February the...
2/20 was the draft.
Yeah. I think we've forgotten the history of where we came from with this.
Don't get too close, Robbie.
Yeah. You know, the comp plan, December 17, 18 was adopted. Our contract with Kendall Keith was May 28 of 19. So we're sitting here almost four years down the road, and whether we like it or not, and most of this is me speaking for me, but if it's a fact, I'll tell you, it's a fact. When we got the original document from Kendall Keith, it was not good. So staff started out with the document that they were presented with, and I think for about a year, Robbie, you won't remember because you were still over doing your real job, staff was working with it, trying to make what I would call some sense of it, and also, they started having meetings with two specific groups of people, those being the developers, builders on the one hand, and a sign group on the other. And that continued, and the meetings with the developers, builders has continued through today. Mayor Pope, I guess after staff had been wrangling with it for about a year, appointed Jeff Griffith, Randy Christian, and me to sit as a council committee to work with staff and others on trying to make it a better document, because it was not. It was not Lubbock. It had terms in it that didn't mean anything to anybody, and so for a year and a half, and these are the people I want to thank, are Jeff Griffith and Randy Christian, because they hung in there for a year and a half, meeting every Thursday to talk about it. And in the meantime, staff, at that time Assistant City Manager Jessica McCracken, was meeting regularly with builders and developers, regularly, and she would report back to the council group. We would meet. We tried to address some of the problems that planning and zoning was having with cases. The real thing, planning and zoning was crying out to us and saying, "Would you all, would you please fix this?" And that's what we were trying to do, was fix some of those ongoing problems. Now, for everybody else, if you have a special interest in it, then your interests leaned towards whatever your special interest was, whether it was billboards or whether it was development. It didn't matter. But in the meantime, there were those of us who were neutral. We didn't, we were just trying to make a better document for all the citizens of Lubbock. We even got to the point, we had to ask the consultants to change the names of some of the districts because nobody could recognize them. They didn't mean anything, and it's still gonna be a challenge for everybody with the new names. It's not R1 and R2 anymore. And so it's going to be a learning curve. Now, the developers' group probably understands the document better than anybody because they did the page-by-page turn, and they hired a lawyer, and they had 800, as I recall, 800 changes they wanted made to the document, and a lot of those have been made. Now, my special thanks to Robbie is that we had, after we had the public hearing here, Planning and Zoning had their meeting where they were going to talk about the UDC, and they had not had the document very long. Robbie, this document's what, 500 and something pages long?
Yes, ma'am.
They'd never, they didn't have it very long, but they came to their meeting, and the Friday before their meeting, they received a 29-page, single-line list of changes, and I received it from their lawyer. So in addition to a document that's huge, they had the single-spaced, 29-page list of changes. Zach is the Chair of Planning and Zoning. Why don't you stand up, because you, they walked into this with a whole new document and a whole bunch of changes, and they didn't get up and leave. Tanner Noble was there. You guys, they didn't leave. They were like, "Okay, what are we going to do with this?" And they met and they talked, and they realized that this was too big for one meeting, and they broke and they set another meeting. It was a huge undertaking for them. I just, it was huge. It was huge for Robbie. Kristen was tied up in a jury trial, and so Robbie stepped in with Eric to try to move this thing forward, and then before the last meeting, we got 42 more changes from the builders' developers' group. Forty-two amendments. Now, I know that Robbie and Eric, Kristen, staff had met with the home builders and developers constantly. That was a frequent meeting to try to work through these, which everybody appreciates. That's the way we could get this deal done, but at the same time, staff has to protect the interest of the city, the people who live here, who pay taxes here, and who get up and go to work every day, not necessarily as developers, builders, or sign people. They have to do that, and so when they brought up the last 42 items, some of which I don't think Robbie had seen all of them, I think he had dealt with them. all of them, I think he had dealt with them from time to time. And honestly, Planning and Zoning didn't have time to, to really study them. Someone made a suggestion at, at, next to the last meeting, said, well, why don't you take these and go have lunch and look at them over lunch? You can't look at this stuff over lunch. It's too complex. It's, you know, you've got to go back and forth in the document. And so it really disturbed me on a personal level and as a council member, that Robbie Wallace had to stand up at that dais, at that, that microphone, and have questions asked of him such as, well, what's wrong with this amendment? What's wrong? Why can't you do this? And he tried as hard as he could to say, I haven't had time to look at them. I haven't had time to study them. Now, I don't blame Planning and Zoning. Y'all hadn't had time either, and so they were approved. And so I think my concern with, with this document, one of them is the 42 amendments that came at the last minute, and some of them are substantial. Ms. Kreitz mentioned one of them this morning, or this afternoon, when we started. They do need to be looked at. And yes, maybe they can be changed. I don't know, because who's going to be here next will be another, be another question. So we've made a lot of progress, and I think we have a document. I think it is very vague in places. I know it's vague in places, and if it's vague, it's not enforceable. And the reason I'm telling you this, I'm not going to tell you how I'm going to vote, but what I'm going to tell you is that matters. If you have a code, it is something that you intend to enforce for everybody. It contains some guidelines. They don't belong in a code. Guidelines are not enforceable. Those are, you may do something as opposed to you shall. And so I think there's a lot of vagueness in it, and so I think it's going to present problems. And Zack, that's why I'm talking to you and Tanner. The intent was to simplify the code. The intent was to take some of the burden off of Planning and Zoning and off of ZBA. And I'm afraid that this is not going to do that. So I think people need to listen to everybody who's come up here, starting with the public hearing. There was a lot of input there, and there was a lot of input at Planning and Zoning. Unfortunately, this council wasn't there to hear it. I was there because I kind of got, and I understand people watch things online, I understand that, but I'm talking in person where you can eyeball somebody. I had served with those three guys. I stayed on as the, I guess, liaison. And so I stayed to listen because I want to hear. I want to hear what the people had to say. So all that is to say, it is not perfect. It, it has its flaws, and the 42 amendments are a problem for me because that was not something that Planning and Zoning should have had to deal with at that last meeting. And it's not something that Robbie Wallace or Eric should have had to deal with at that last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Joy.
I think it showed a lack of respect.
Yeah, there's a lot of things Robbie shouldn't have had to put up with through this process or Kristen, not just from people in the development people, Development Council or otherwise. There's a lot of things they shouldn't have had to put up with. I agree with some things that have been said, that this is not 100% complete, and I don't think it can be, because Steve's words were very accurate, that this is a living document that we're going to have to continue to work on. But I did hear Kristen say that staff wholly recommends this, and I do not believe our staff, who's been so incredible to work with us and work through this, would put us in a position to make a recommendation to council and then say, oh, wait, you know, but it's not a good recommendation. Think that everybody realizes this is a work in progress, just like we all are, and, and there are works in progress that have to happen, and we will work through those. But we are also the trustees of this city, and we're the trustees of our children, and we're the trustees of the future of this city right now. And as trustees, we have to look to what's better for our city moving forward. And this document does that. This helps us grow. This helps us expand. This simplifies, this modernizes, this makes other people have opportunities and options that they might not otherwise have. This is going to be good for us over time. And so Steve's motion that we change the date to October 1st is a great idea that gives us ample time to address some of these things that we may have to come back. We can then open those fewer items up to a public hearing and work through those issues. And I think that that is a great plan for us. I've also heard some other terms from others that have said, you know, you want tools in your toolbox. Just because you don't have a tool in your toolbox today doesn't mean you can't go get that tool and add it, or it doesn't mean that you can't go and take a toolbox out of your toolbox. That's the options that we have moving forward. And so we can keep looking at these things, analyzing, talking to, to others that have, that are stakeholders in our community. You know, we and the people of this community are taxpayers, and they're stakeholders in our communities, but guess what? So are all you people that objected to the signs. So are many of you that wanted change in signs. So are our builders and our developers and people that invest in our communities. We're all a community, and we're stakeholders together. And so I'm grateful to everyone that took eyes, that, you know, these, these men and women didn't have to spend, they don't work for the city, didn't have to spend thousands of their own hours looking at this, but they did. You didn't have to look at this and spend your time, Stephen, Jim, others, Cheryl, getting involved and look at this and get involved, but you did, because it matters. That's why we're a community, and we don't always see eye to eye. We never will. But we're a community, and I'm proud of that. I'm proud to see this last year, that this has come to fruition, and that we have something to move forward to. Who else, who's on P&amp;Z that's here today? We got three of you? James, thank you. Tanner. Zack. Yeah, did he slip out the back? I mean, thank you, y'all. Everybody says, what's it like being mayor? And I said, it's way better than being on P&amp;Z. And so I appreciate all of your work so very much, those that have called, invested in this. Again, it's not perfect, but I think that's something we need to pass and get working on and moving forward, or we'll be spinning our wheels for years to come. So I'm in favor of this. I would ask that we move on, unless anyone else has anything else. I would ask that we move. Ms. Patterson-Harris? Sorry, I didn't see you green.
And it's not so much a, a statement, but there are some specific things, and I'd like to take this time, if I may, to kind of put those things out there, and it's something that between now and the next time we come, that staff can take a look at them and say, hey, we can't, we can, or whatever.
Not May 9th?
No, not May 9th, because I'm going on vacation starting Thursday. And I ain't, uh, 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 no. Okay. Phew, okay. All right. These are just some things that, in, in my time that I have had to look at some of the, the things on the UDC thus far. What I would ask staff is, and this may be something maybe to bring back to council members, just to, and if I'm out of, out of order, please let me know, but I want, I have questions with regard to some of the concerns that many of the citizens raised regarding the HDR, the High Density Residential. Just kind, I guess, give some little more clarity to make sure that some of those concerns that they had, I would imagine that they're probably concerns for others. I'm not sure if the, there would be some things that the developers would have concerns for, but in case, I think we make sure that we're clear as to what, where we are on that. In addition, just saying, because I, I think it's huge, and I think over the years, the city has done well allowing citizens to have their say regarding things that they feel will impact them. And, and I think that's, that's definitely a place that we want to make sure that we remain. My stance with regard to amortization, I think P&amp;Z, the, you folks that made the suggestion and approval that a committee be created to address, to address this particular topic. And I, I think it's a great idea, but I think we do it sooner rather than later, because there are some things that have impacted communities over the years that we can do a better job of, so that they don't become and continue to be issues for other citizens. And I think I was advising, if I got this wrong, guys, please, charge it to my head and I'm a heart, that also, as, this would be the space where we could discuss at maybe changing the notification boundaries for when things are being requested for zone changes and whatnot that may come before the, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because I think that we keep a lot of citizens out of that, and they don't get to have their say, and they may have some things that they would like to say, but because that has not been shared with them, I think it is an issue. So aside from, you know, saying some of the same things that the other council members said with regard to saying, thank you, everybody who's had, who's taken time to take a look at this, because when I, I say, and you probably know, this is where been one heavy something. It really has, and it, and it's, and that goes to let you know just how important it is. So thank you, y'all. Thank you for everyone who's had a part in this, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right. We have 7.16 in front of us. Robbie, Ms. Joy has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am. Robbie, I think you know my concern and, and yours has been those 42 amendments.
Yes, ma'am.
That we got on the last day.
Uh huh.
There's a couple ways we could go about that. One is we could exclude those. We could amend and take them out of the UDC. Or the only other way is for you to have time to look at those and say, and meet with these people who've got concerns about them.
Uh huh.
To say, yes, or no. How do you, I mean, how do you feel about having to deal with that between now and October 1st?
I feel pretty comfortable with it, to be honest with you. A lot of these amendments, I, you know, since that meeting, I've had a chance to, number one, talk to our consultant about them, and, and there's a lot of them that, that we agree that really don't have a lot of bearing on the code. They're something that they want maybe just clarified for a reference that doesn't change anything. Now, there are some that we probably do need to research a little bit further, but I would say there was, there's maybe less than five that fall under that category. So I think if we focus on those, I, I think we'll be fine. I certainly see no problem with that.
You've heard Mary Kreitz talk about the overlay on the historic, on the historic buildings. She has concerns. Mr. Murphy made, I thought, made some excellent suggestions about the HDR fixing that. Ms. Patterson-Harris has raised increasing the notification period from, you know, 200 to a larger number. There were a lot of buffer issues also, and I'm surprised Sheila didn't mention, didn't mention those, but we need, probably need to look at those again, because there were a number of border issue, of buffer issues on that 42 amendment list.
Yes, ma'am.
And I am assuming that you have resolved the issue on the bond?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. You know, looking at where we were a year ago with the amount of comments, and we've tried to do so much so fast, and, and we've tried to look at things, that having it condensed down to this small amount that we're talking about here is really motivating to me, because we, we were just trying to do so much. And so I really, I, I embrace that opportunity to have till October to focus on these things that we're talking about, even if it's really just that 42-page list, and, and really make sure that it works for everybody in the community in their best interest. I, I'm fine with that.
Think you can, can make it through that and all the comments that you've heard by October the 1st, and get it on council agenda? I mean...
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we're going to get to work on that tomorrow. Well, maybe not tomorrow, but the next day. We need, we need, we need one day after the last year, but no, and, and meeting with people's been enlightening to us. You know, we've met with some of the people that talked today, and, and I think that there is a solution. I will say this, and I think that the development community would agree with me, not every one of these 800 things that came up was something that we changed. They were, a lot of it was us reading the document and explaining it. And, and there's a lot of times that we've been able to tell people, you know, hey, if you'll read it this way and you'll see what it means, it's explaining the document. And I think there's some of these that we need to delve into a little deeper to make sure that we're confident that it's not going to be an issue. We don't want to see, you know, something happen that, that's a huge problem with development. We've tried very hard to prevent that, but I think we're in a very good spot. I really do.
Okay. I'm going to hold you to it.
Thank you, Robbie. All right. We've got 7.16 in front of us. We have a motion and a second. I'm not even, I don't even remember who had the motion. Mr. Masengill's motion. So what we have before us is there's no, there's no amendment. It's just we're making that a non-substantive change, correct, Chad? So we're voting on the proposed 7.16 with a change of a date change of October 1st of 2023 as implementation.
That's, that's correct. Unless there's an objection, that's correct.
All right. All in favor of approval of 7.16 as stated? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, motion carries 7.16. All right, well, next move to 7.17 and 7.18. This is, we see a mass exodus here.
You should, you should stay for this. This is good news.
We, we won't be too long. What I do have, and I would remind council, whoever makes this awesome motion for us, if you would please call out the name of the person that we are appointing, so that will be formal. So at this time, council, I'd ask for a motion, consider resolution, appointing our city secretary.
So moves.
I move first, appointing Ms. Courtney.
And I second.
You got jumped. All right. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. I've got a third and a fourth already by Mr. Masengill, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of 7.17, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by same sign? All right, it's official. Courtney, congratulations. Motion is approved. A council, 7.18 is the agreement that we had passed out, I believe, two weeks ago, and then it has also circulated. Jimmy handed out copies. That is the formal agreement, so I would ask for a motion on 7.18 to approve the severance agreement with Courtney.
So moves.
Thank you, Mr. Masengill. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of 7.18, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, 7.18 carries 7-0. We'll sign those documents directly hereafter. It is 4:37, and we are adjourned.